This is a regular city council meeting for Tuesday, May 18th, 2021. At 6:00 PM, the first order of business this evening will be to bring the meeting to order. The meeting, we bring the meeting to order and the 11 o'clock rule will be enforced. The first item on our agenda this evening is for the Pledge of Allegiance. Harrison, would you please lead us? Thank you. Roll call.
Doug Glasbell.
Here.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
David Reed. Harrison Hall.
Present.
All city councilors and our youth council representative are present.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda, Mr. Protem?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Alright, thank you. Next would be our call to the public for comment. Do we have any persons who would like to comment on non-agenda items this evening? Alright, then I'll move on. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the past meeting. Council consideration minutes for the May 4th, 2021 regular city council meeting. Do I have a motion?
Mayor Glasbell, I move to approve the minutes of the May 4th, 2021 regular city council meeting as presented.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is youth council report to the city council.
Hello. My name's Harrison Hall. I'm currently the mayor of the Montrose Youth City Council. And tonight, we are giving you guys our annual youth city council report and presentation. This are visions and goals right now. So, are, we really are trying hard to be the voices for our youth in our city. And then, we also want to increase the community involvement with our youth as well. So, different events, things like that. And then, we are currently planning on some future events with our next term. And then, we also want to expand our local government focus. Next up, our 2020 through 2021 meeting projects. We have our December and November project, which was our time capsule. Then, for January, we had our food drive, which was partnered with MADA. And then, for February, we had a drug awareness, social media campaign for bringing drug awareness to our youth and saying that drugs are bad. March, we are pushing hard for our recruitment. That project is still going on even now. We have applications being turned in from middle schools, from eighth graders and high schoolers as well. And then, for April, it was Earth Week. So, we decided to make our projects with our Earth Week activities. And we had our street cleanup. And then, we also partnered with Montrose Anglers and did a river cleanup. And then, May, we have a outdoor social media campaign currently going on right now. And I will pass it to Gunnison to talk about our November and December.
Hello, I'm Gunnison, Mayor Protem of the Montrose Youth City Council. So, our first project of the year was a very ambitious one. Late December through the month of, sorry, late November through the month of December, we worked on putting together a time capsule for the year 2070. The city had just opened a 2020 time capsule earlier that year buried by the citizens of Montrose in 1970. So, to carry on that legacy, we worked in partnership with the city, especially Public Works and several other departments and dozens of local businesses to facilitate the burial of the time capsule. We buried it in late December. And the, the interaction we saw with local businesses, individuals, and organizations really was great to see. We had drop off locations across town in several spots for people to drop off items they would want Montrose to be remembered by. And the turnout that we saw was amazing. I think the, the city council, youth council, and general citizens of, of Montrose in 2070 will be able to look back 50, well, it'd be 49 years from now, a year closer all the time. But they'll be able to look back and see a community of Montrose that saw a bright future among the troubles that 2020 brought about. So, next, I'll pass it over to Grace Hotson-Piller to talk about our January project.
Hi, I'm Grace Hotson-Piller. I did the January project, and that was a food drive for MADA. That's who we partnered with. We set out baskets all over the community, in the rec centers, several different churches, small businesses. And it was just amazing to see how much the community contributed to the, to the donations. Just absolutely amazing, kind of blew us away, honestly, when we collected all the baskets. And we just had tables and tables full, as you can see in that picture. We also contributed $100 worth of food to that donation and hopefully made some people's day at MADA.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so for February, our project was a drug awareness project. And so, one of the big things we did as a youth council was we did mock interviews with several city staff. And that was kind of an experience for the future, for the interviewing process in the future. And then, for drug awareness, the youth city council created drug awareness videos and posters. And those were presented on social media. And then, there was also a drug awareness presentation given to youth council by Melissa Hall and Brittany Turner.
Thank you. Do you have any other items for us?
So, then for our March project, we focused a lot on recruitment for our council since we have not that many members currently. And we wanted to show everybody how great it was and try to get the youth interested. So, we all created videos. You can see that amazing screenshot of me flicking money out because showing the scholarship that we offer in youth city council. And then, we posted those on all our social media and did presentations to the eighth grade classes in Centennial and Columbine to hopefully get some awareness. And then, we also had Alpine Bank come and present to us, of course, over Zoom, just about financial literacy and how to spend our money in the future and how to save and different ways in the bank that we don't necessarily learn in our school system that was really helpful for us.
Alright, thank you.
Next up, we had our April project, which was our Earth Week proclamation. And we also did our other two projects in that month revolving around Earth Week activities, which one of them was our yearly requirement for our street cleanup, which went very well. As you can see, we have some pictures of that in the back there. Then, we were also able to partner with Montrose Anglers. And we did a river cleanup down at River Bottom and was able to collect a decent amount of trash from our river area. And swimming, it went swimmingly.
Alrighty, so for May, the Montrose Youth City Council is currently working on promoting the outdoors and outdoor recreation through our social media. And we are specifically focusing on helping students kind of find places where they can get outside during these last few weeks of school, during finals, and places to hike, bike, or run in our community. And it's really just to encourage the youth to go outside, especially after this year we've had. So, yeah. And finally, thank you, and are there any questions?
Any questions, council?
Just a comment, I'm so proud of you guys. You guys are awesome, you've done a great job. I wish that we'd been able to do more things together in person this last year. But you really give us here at the city of Montrose a reason to be proud of our youth and so hopeful. I know, just based on how excited you guys are about the work you've done, I think that you all will probably find yourselves engaged in your communities the rest of your lives. So, hopefully with Montrose, if you're here next year, hopefully in college, if you're doing that next year. And then, I want you to run for city council sometime.
And I didn't, we didn't catch your name.
Oh, my name's Zach Oldroyd.
Thank you. And I would kind of mirror Barbara's comments that you guys give us hope, hope for the future, hope for our youth, that you're doing it right. And we just really love seeing that enthusiasm, that drive, and that real engagement in the community from our young people. And I really just hope that you guys get as much out of this as a community has gotten from you.
And I think it's been great for us to have you folks sitting in on our meetings each time, those that can make it. And it's been a great opportunity for us to interface with you and have you give us occasionally some input back on what we're doing right or wrong. So, we do appreciate that. And I have one other little item, and we'd like to have Harrison meet me over here by the old American City, if you would. Thank you. Harrison has been the mayor for the youth council this year, and we have a couple of items for him. One of them is a book on how to take care of your dad. No, no, that's someone said. His father happens to be the chief of police, Angela Duckworth. And we'd like to present this book to you. And we also have a certificate that we would like to give you for your work that you have done this past year. And we hope that you'll come back again.
I will, sir. Well, this has been a true honor getting to know all of you and working with my peers and fellow students. It's, it's amazing. The work we've been able to do with our youth and everyone in general, we've been able to partner with businesses. We've been able to get our name out there to other businesses. And we've had people and other youth councils around Colorado come to us and ask us for advice on how to do projects and other ideas. And it's truly been a great honor. So, thank you all for having me, and thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have, we have two great city employees that have worked with them. Would you ladies like to say anything?
Thank you, Mayor Glasbell. We actually have one more little presentation too, for Zach Oldroyd, who is our sole senior this year on the council, if you want to come up, Zach. So, Zach is graduating this year, and we wanted to send him off with a little care package here and just say a few words about how grateful we are. Zach's been on the council for two years now, and we cannot thank him enough for the leadership he's brought to the group and all the creative ideas and just really excellent processes that you've updated for us on council. So, we're so grateful, Zach, and we will really miss you next year.
And for those of you who do not know, Zach will be leaving in July to go down to Mexico to complete his mission for two years before going to Idaho for, Utah, I'm sorry, Utah for college.
It's gonna be difficult to run for office here if you're not local. Do you would like to say anything?
I just, it's been amazing to work on the youth city council. And I want to thank Michaela and Kaylee for all their work. I know it's a lot, and I'm so grateful to be able to work with the fellow councilors and the coordinators. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give him that a big hand. I would ask, how many of you that are on the council now are planning on coming back and doing it another year? Do you, are you guys coming back next year for the program?
I know I will be, so I believe we have some others.
I know I'll definitely be coming back. It's been one of the most rewarding experiences I've ever done, so.
Thank you.
See you again soon.
Alright, great. It's good to see some carryover, and it always helps when, with new people when you're helping lead them and providing them information also. So, great job. Next item on our agenda this evening is a utility connection fee abatement for Montrose Ford. And that's a consideration of water and sewer tap and connections fee abatement totaling $14,200 for Montrose Ford Nissan at 100 Merchant Way. And that's Mr. Bill.
As presented at the work session, we had Wes Abbott with us. I don't believe he's with us tonight, but he was here to talk to city council during the work session regarding the expansion of Montrose Ford. You have in your packets an outlined memo talking about their project, their expanding based on the growth in our community. They're adding quite a few service bays, several employees, and they're adding the ability to work on RVs that are coming through, very large RVs. And with the growing tourism trend and people buying RVs and coming out to western Colorado, he mentioned last time that that's a huge part of their growing business model. Their expansion's just over $1 million, and that's outlined in the packet. And they're looking to ask the city council for abatement of the utility fees.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this? Alright, council, any comments, questions?
After having read the staff report, the return on investment to the city, I think, is amazing. And I would totally support this project.
Alright. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve water and sewer tap and connection fee abatements totaling $14,200 for Montrose Ford Nissan as presented in the packet.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. The next item is ordinance 2541, and this is a second reading. The council consideration, consider of ordinance 2541 on second reading, an ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado repealing and replacing Title I, Chapter II, Section 4, 1-2-4, and Title I, Chapter 9, Section 3, 1-9-3 of the official city code of Montrose. Mr. Alcorn.
There are no changes since the last reading. And because of that, I won't go through the details, but I will answer any questions you might have on it.
Council, any questions?
Just for clarification for the public, this is just a housekeeping item that has been presented before. And just kind of clearing up some old language and updated city seal. So, it's just making sure we're all clean and tidy on our paperwork.
Trying to reflect the way we are currently operating as a modern entity and getting to electronic and electronic distribution of information and not using posts and newspapers.
Alright, thank you. Is there any public comment? No public comment, and I would accept a motion.
And I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item number 10 is ordinance 2542 on the first reading. City council to consider an ordinance 2542 on 40, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado designating the Montrose Fire Department, Number 1, 24 South Uncompadre Avenue, Montrose, Colorado, as a city of Montrose historic property pursuant to ordinance 14-15 of this city code for Montrose. Planner, you're here, William.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, city council. I have a few images that I'd like to share with you. So, as stated, this is the first reading for designating the Montrose Fire Department Number 1 Building, also known as the City Hall Annex. It should be noted that while this building is on the same lot as the main city hall, and while City Hall has already been designated, the fire department is being considered a discreet building with its own registry entry owing to its unique architectural characteristics and separate history from City Hall. The building's historical address of 24 South Uncompadre Avenue is being used for this designation. And so, in order for a building to be eligible for our local register, the building must be at least 50 years old, as well as meet at least one of several eligibility criteria. The fire department building is eligible due to its A, association with events that have made a significant contribution to history, and C, distinctive characteristics of a type, period, method of construction, or artisan. And so, this building was constructed in 1910, making it old enough for our register. Prior to the construction of the firehouse, the first uniform fire department was officially organized in 1908. As you can see here, this picture is from 1908. However, the fire protection in Montrose was considered inadequate, and the city began taking bids for the construction of a fire station that would enable the department to adequately meet the needs of the community. The architect was John Antrimus, who is notable for designing several other buildings downtown, including the main city hall and the building we're sitting in today. Final plans were accepted by February 18th, 1910, and construction was completed by June, with the fire department moving in by June 21st. And so, as you can see in these images dated from 1915, the first floor at the time housed the fire wagon, as well as the horses used to pull it. Also note the original front doors of the building, which have since been altered to accommodate newer and motorized fire trucks. Horses were used to pull the fire wagons until 1923. The second story at the time was used as a storage area for hay, as well as the meeting room for the city council. These pictures are from 1923. They show the fire department parading the last horses out of the station for the final time, right before they replaced them with the motorized fire truck. This picture's from the same day in 1923. The building's design has multiple architectural features, which we consider to be defining characteristics that make it eligible for designation. Please note the yellowish tan brick masonry with red accents of flaring red brick vussoirs above the entrance door and the second floor windows, as well as the red brick of the upper brick corbeling. The stepped front and side parapet walls capped with concrete, the decorative brick corbeling below the front parapet wall and over the original truck bay, the rectangular windows with original three-light configuration and stone lug sills on the second story of the front facade, and the stone nameplate with MFD below the, below the upper parapet wall and Number 1 above the truck bay. On the south side of the building, note the, wrong image. On the south side of the building, note the multi-colored brick masonry, the arch door and window openings, and the stone and brick lug sills. Obviously, the elevated glass walkway and the ADA ramp are more recent additions to the building. Let's see. So, on the western side of the building, this portion of the building was originally used as a jail. And the building still features these jail windows with riveted steel coverings. The one on the right has been modified with angled iron. The Historic Preservation Commission considered the application for designation on April 27th, 2021, and voted unanimously in support of recommendation to city council the approval of this designation. The building is owned by the city, and city staff recommends approval of 24 South Uncompadre Avenue to be placed on the historic registry. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Council, any questions? In that case, I'll open a public hearing. Do we have anyone who would like to speak at the public hearing? Not seeing any hands raised. I would consider a motion for approval.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2542 on first reading as presented.
I have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is a lease agreement for 703 South Ninth Street. The city council is to consider a lease agreement between the city of Montrose and Montrose County School District for the property located at 703 South Ninth Street. And our staff engagement individual is Ross Valdez. How are you tonight, Ross?
I'm doing great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council, before you today is a new lease between the city of Montrose for land that a building owned by the Montrose County School District is sitting on. As I mentioned during work session, this is a five-year lease that the city is proposing for the land that the, that the building is sitting on. It used to be the Passage Charter School. Once the Passage Charter School dissolved, the lease dissolved with it. And so, we are just looking to renew that lease for the Montrose County School District and their operations that they're having there currently.
Do you have any history on how long the city has owned it? Do we have any background on it?
I do not know how long the city has owned it, but I do know that they entered into that lease back in, I believe, 1998. And it's part of Archmont Park, that area.
Any questions, council? In that case, I'll accept any public comment. Don't see any. And I'd consider a motion to approve the lease agreement.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. The next item is a lease agreement on 514 South First Street. So, we'll be considering a lease between the city of Montrose and Straw Hat Farms LLC for the building located at 514 South First Street. And Ross, you're gonna give us the information on this one.
Thanks again, yes. Again, as I mentioned in, during our work session, this is a amendment. this is a amendment to the current lease that the city has for the building at five-fourteen South First Street, where Straw Hat Farm currently operates. There, the major changes to, to notice here are that there's some clarification around kitchen equipment, since they installed a commercial kitchen in the building. And the second change is regarding the length of the lease. They're requesting a two-year extension to the lease based on the investment they have made in the property and the updates that they have done over the course of the years.
Any questions?
So we're extending the lease, which would normally expire in twenty-three, but instead of waiting till then, we're going to, right now, extend it to twenty-five?
Yes, exactly. We'd be extending it two years, um, based on the fact that they're, uh, making some significant improvements to the property.
Any other questions, Barbara? Do we have any public comment? No publicly comment, and that case, I will consider a motion to approve the commercial lease agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the commercial lease agreement between the City of Montrose and Straw Hat Farms LLC as presented.
I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is staff reports, sales use, and excise tax report by Shaney Whittenburg.
Good evening, city council. It's been a while since I've sat in one of these chairs in this room, um, so forgive me. As I understand it, I'm supposed to share my screen, so let me do that. There we go. So this is the March Sales Use and Excise Tax Collection Report presented to you tonight. And I gotta get my bearings here. General Fund Sales and Use Tax is collected at three percent. I don't know when last time I saw almost a thirty percent increase year-over-year in retail sales tax. So, um, I'm contributing it to COVID. This is kind of when everything started to shut down last year, so I'm assuming, um, that's part of it. But our retail sales tax is up almost thirty percent. Our construction use tax is down thirteen point four percent, but that one kind of fluctuates on when building permits are pulled, that type of thing. It is not reflective of the construction that's going on in Montrose. Use and auto use tax up thirty-six percent with total collections up twenty-seven point six percent, and a positive budget variance for March of thirty-seven and a half percent. Okay. I still gotta get my bearings. Got two screens going. I think we're good. Year-to-date, retail sales tax is up twenty point eight percent or seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Construction use tax up one point one percent or two thousand dollars. Use and auto use tax up forty-five point three percent or a hundred and seven thousand dollars with total collections of twenty-one point three percent or almost nine hundred thousand dollars. Positive budget variance of twenty-nine percent or one point one million dollars for the first quarter of twenty-twenty-one. Public Safety Sales and Use Tax, this is collected at point five eight percent. March, we collected three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars or thirty-three point two percent more than we did in March of twenty-twenty. Year-to-date, we're almost at a million dollars collected for the first quarter or twenty-three point four percent from twenty-twenty. Our budget variance is thirty-six point three percent or two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars more has been collected for, um, public safety. Montrose Recreation District adds point three percent to our tax. And in March, we collected two hundred thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars or thirty-two point three percent more than we did last year in March. And year-to-date, five hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars has been collected or twenty-two point five percent compared to the first quarter of twenty-twenty. Excise taxes, this adds point nine percent for hotel and point eight percent for restaurant. Hotel excise tax is up a hundred and six percent. Restaurant excise tax up fifty point nine percent with total collections at fifty-six point six percent. This is the first time you've seen a totally green screen for, um, excise taxes or a positive budget variance of sixty-three point six percent. Those numbers are really large, but the dollar amounts are really not that much. You'll see on the next screen. Hotel excise tax, year-to-date through March, twenty-one point five percent more or three thousand dollars. Restaurant excise tax seventeen point nine percent or eighteen thousand dollars with a total of eighteen point three percent or twenty-one thousand extra dollars compared to twenty-twenty. Budget variance positive twenty point three percent or twenty-three thousand dollars for the first quarter. Retail sales enhancement, this is the portion of the vendor's fee that retailers gave up for promoting Montrose. In March, we collected forty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars or thirty-three point two percent more than we did in March of twenty-twenty with year-to-date collections up twenty-two point eight, six percent or twenty-two thousand dollars for a total collection of a hundred and twenty thousand, nine thirty-five for RSE. With that, I will take any questions or comments you all may have.
Thank you. Anyone have a question?
I just think these numbers reflect what I'm seeing when I go out and run errands on the weekend. Stores are very busy. Good to see for them.
And I think the economic, economic nexus has made a difference as well. Absolutely.
David, anything? I think that's a great report, and we hope to continue to see that positive movement. First quarter budget review. Shaney, you're gonna do that also?
I am. Um, so through the first quarter of twenty-twenty-one, everything is looking great. Most, all of the, um, major funds are positive, of course, and have collected very close to the twenty-five percent of revenues that we expect. And the expenses are much lower than that, so we're definitely doing well. We've got several capital projects going this year, the biggest one being the police department right next door, that new building, and that will be a multi-year project, so we'll see some more of that in twenty-twenty-two as well. Water, sewer, the golf course, um, that's definitely a positive from twenty-twenty as our golf course has really picked up in, um, business. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any additional Youth Council comments?
Uh, I do, Mr. Mayor. So this year has truly been an awesome and very successful year for our council despite COVID and repercussions and what we've had to deal with. And this is my last city council meeting. I will be attending as mayor, and I'd like to say again, thank you all for having me. Special thank you to our Youth Council coordinators, Michaela and Kaylee. And this has truly been an awesome year.
Thank you. Any other council members, Youth Council members like to say anything? All right. City council comments?
Anytime you're sitting around drinking coffee six o'clock in the morning, whatever you wanna do, you can participate.
Barbara? You don't have anything?
Something's up. Um, I'll, I'll defer.
I defer. All right. I'd just like to thank the, the Youth Council. You guys have done a great job, and we certainly do appreciate that. And always happy to see returns coming back and the job we're doing getting out and soliciting for more, uh, people to help you with those. So anything we can do, I will certainly try to help with that. In that case, if I have no more comments, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
All right. We are done for this evening. Thank you.